Without the power of God behind everything I do, I really am completely inadequate.
I'm helping the culture. These guys are, these guys are part of us as well. You know, these are guys of our cousin. I'm helping the culture. I'm, I'm pushing the culture forward in another way.
What do you do after you read? What do you do after you know all, right? And you can say that you're truly conscious. How are you putting what you know into action?
Hello, hello. Welcome back to the New Black History Makers podcast. I'm your host Jasmine Gates and we are here with another episode. We are joined by Ms. Adrienne Thomas. So I'm super excited for this because if you know the New Black History Makers, we have done a lot of work in the city of Compton. So we were pushing a lot of just different narratives and more positive narratives and bringing awareness to the most recent election, which happened in 2021. So now to be at the brink of another election, which is happening with the school board, we're just excited to be able to bring this awareness to you guys. And she is a candidate for, and excuse me, because I didn't even put this down here, but I know that the section is E, but what is the correct terminology? Is it E?
It's E. It's Area E.
Area E. Okay. So that's the correct.
Correct. So Compton now is in trusty areas. There's seven trusty areas, which makes it easier than having an at-large election. That way you're able to represent certain schools in the resident, resident area in which you live.
Okay, right. So yeah. And then just for context, I do not know all the schools, but I know that Compton Unified reaches outside of Compton as well. So this is, even if you feel like, oh, I don't live in Compton, you know, some schools that are neighbor in neighboring cities are also affected. And then also, even if you don't live in the city, we always say that it's good for you to even just listen and then take these questions and take the information that you hear today and bring them to your, you know, local politicians or bring them to your school board politicians as well. So just because you're not a Compton candidate or Compton citizen, excuse me, does not mean that this conversation is not for you. I know there's so many people who just are not aware of how the school board affects the, the city. So we want to just bring this information to you. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. So what you said was very powerful. It, it, even if you don't have children in the school district, the community school is very important. Strong schools give stronger or more, a higher property value. They also attract businesses. And also a community school can be used for community events and certain things such as that. So as they say, I'll keep the lights on kind of thing. So it does make a neighborhood in some way safer as well. So it's very important for all those who live anywhere within the vicinity of a school or have schools in their, in their, and where they live, need to support the schools because you already do through your taxes. I think it's very important for people to understand that. And I think sometimes we forget that part. Tax dollars is what, is what pays for our school besides the ADA we get from the state. There's also bond measures and things that we have in place for our infrastructure, for teacher salaries, for anything that we need to do to improve facilities and instruction.
Yeah, I love this. So before we get into the logistics and all the political stuff, we definitely want to do a check-in. So just like, how are you? How, how is your day really going?
There's a lot going on. Deciding to run was, I guess you could, I, I just did it. I've never ran for political office before. It is a lot. You learn a lot. You have to decide who you will be, of course, you know. You don't want to sell yourself out, you know. I promise if you do this for me, I'll do that for you. You have to be careful of your alliances. I've learned a lot. The good way though, in a good way.
Right. So then y'all know if you have watched the show, but there's, I was reading an article one day and it was saying it's important to not only ask, how are you doing? But then to also ask questions that kind of foster a real, you know, answer. And even though usually when people come on the show, they give me the real answer for the first one. So these are picked at random. The question that I'm going to ask you is one of my favorite questions because you know, some of them have been repeated. But this one is how could you have showed yourself more graciously?
I could have shown myself more graciously by saying no. No is a good word. It's self-preservation and I have to do a better job at that because you know, you take on too much, you spread yourself thin. Then sometimes you don't do as well as you should have done or you could have done. And you, you may make someone feel devalued because you wanted to give all of you, but you only gave a part of you because you just didn't say no, you know? And so I had to, I need to give myself more grace and say no. And, and tell someone else that they can take it on and do it or uplift someone else and say, it's your turn or what have you.
Yeah, I love that. Usually the second question, usually people are very honest or at least somewhat honest with the first one of just like, how are you doing? But the second one, that's where it's like, okay, there's something there. It's always a good thing. So I love, just for the people to hear like, okay, you know, these are practical ways to, you know, make your life better a little bit, you know? So I love that. So then let's also just get into you, Ms. Adrienne Thomas. Like tell us a little about yourself. I'll say this, I said it with Brandon Mims when he was running and I'll say it again with you. I have read over your bio and qualified, like overly qualified, you know? So that's something that I, I think we in the, in the city of Compton have not always seen. We've just seen people that are like, I want to be here or they've been corrupted. So I'll definitely let you get into it. But like I said, they're definitely someone that would come and bring a lot of experience and just knowledge to the position. And I don't think we've seen that often in some of these positions, you know, with some of these elected officials. So.
Well, just a little bit about me. I came to California. I was a journalist when I moved here. I worked for a magazine. And I was kind of bored with magazine. I left newspaper and on the back of a bus one day it said Teach Compton 2000. I was like, oh, interesting. So I didn't know anything about working with students or I wasn't, you know, I didn't go to school for education initially. So I decided to work at a group home. So it was me and six boys at a group home and it was interesting. I learned a lot about why they were there, how to, how to do things on a weekend out of the box, you know, to entertain them, but also motivate them for whatever reason they were there for. So that really invigorated me and wanting to help youth. Before that I was reporting on youth that passed and I didn't find that to be fulfilling. That's why I left newspaper. So when I started teaching at Compton, I, I found my calling. And so education is deeply, deeply rooted in me and I didn't know it was. But mixing that, you know, wanting to have all the knowledge and get as much as I can, I wanted to impart that to students and I did that. And telling them, if you can read, if you learn to read well, write well, to speak well, you'll never be broke. Because some people are afraid to speak. Some people definitely afraid to write, you know, and some people just don't read. So, and that was the trifecta. So I was a teacher in Compton for four years, was laid off and left in education for a minute. And then came back in 2007 to Compton and I had been there into 20, came back as a middle school teacher, was an English teacher first. And then I went to the district office as instructional support administrator for secondary curriculum instruction. And left Compton in 2014, but I was proud of the work that all the teachers in Compton did with Common Core. And from the math to the science to the English and using the books that we had at that time, because no one had textbooks that had Common Core standards. But doing as much as we can for that school year, I think it was that 2012 school year, I'm sorry, that 2015 school year. Making sure that everyone was ready, ready to go.
I love that. So the journalism piece and then transitioning into education and then now seeing where you are now with in administration, I think that's really cool. So was that something you just always knew you wanted to kind of get into? Because I know you mentioned that you were writing about kids and.
I think, I think when I was a reporter, a lot of my stories were about youth that were in gangs. I would have a photographer in myself and we would listen to the radio scanners and travel the streets and that, it just wasn't fulfilling. Like that's, that just, it has to be more. I had to do more to pay it forward than miss. And so I just became disheartened. So I left journalism for that reason. And now just seeing the life opportunities that you're able to give students and impart to them is so much more fulfilling and much, much more important to society than reporting on the youth after they passed or was killed. And I just didn't feel that fulfilling. I mean, because to write those like cute little feature stories and all that, you got to be there for some time, you know? But the hard news, what we used to call it, hard news is, you know, the blood, sweat and tears. That was, you go out and do that. You know, we need you and we need you in the trenches, you know, but to sit behind an anchor desk, that would be far off. So you know, that's when I was in television and I didn't feel like being an actor and it happened to get an agent and all that. It was, it was crazy. So I left, I left that newspaper. Who knew, you know, that it would die in certain kind of way, but go to online, you know? So it's just interesting how life takes you in different ways. And I think this is just where I am to be. And I was, I, I believe I was a great teacher. I love being a teacher. I'm always a teacher, even when I'm teaching adults. I'm dealing with administrators now in my position as an equity director. But I think it's important to just always just focus on never be out of touch with the youth. It's just, it's too easy for me to leave my office and go to a school campus and just spend the day there. And people should do that more. Even if you are administrator, there's nothing wrong with just going to elementary school or middle school. If you have that, if you have that leisure, that luxury rather, to do that, because you don't ever want to be out of touch. You don't want to be so high up here that you forget what the teachers are feeling, how the students are doing, what the facilities are not giving or what they are giving, or what does the instruction look like? What does the structure sound like? Does it feel like? So I just overall, I just a narrative of education.
I love that. Yeah. So it's definitely just interesting. And I love that you're saying, you know, don't forget basically like where you come from or and to see that you've moved, you know, this ladder. It's like you have the experience as, you have the experience of the people that you're in charge of or the people that are under, you know, your umbrella. So to not get to a place of being like, okay, I'm here now. So we're just going to focus on things that are up here, but being concerned with the people that are affected by your decisions and all of this. So I think that is definitely great. And then I also want to get into your experience, you know, working at the district. So I think that's also something that we don't necessarily see often with some of the candidates. So you were there. So you definitely have experience and can speak to it.
I think, you know, Compton has had, we've had some, we've had, we had some good leaders. We've had some interesting leaders. I think what led me to, when they had this instructional council and each principal, and I was working at Woodbrook at the time. Each principal had to choose someone that would go to this instructional council of the district and then learn about what was going on and come back and report to the staff. So my principal had chosen me and saw that I was a teacher leader and I was like, okay, I'll take that. And so I, I really became interested in that work and how we learned about what was going on, what is coming, what initiative and that we need to basically help our, our colleagues with and understand. And it was almost like a trainer of trainers. And we would have time in the staff meeting to talk about whatever that initiative was or just some reminders and things like that, which made it more, I guess, palatable to teachers because if I'm like them and I went, then they will listen more so than a principal top-down in it, you know? And then so just from there, I kept pushing to do, I wanted to be assistant principal, kept pushing, never got it, kept pushing, never got it. But then a job came up as a TOSA, which is a teacher on special assignment for English. And I, I took that job and left and went to district office first as a TOSA, just working on English and, you know, reading and literacy, only for secondary. And this is when we were still, we weren't K-8 yet. This is when we were still middle school secondary, like six through 12. And it was a really good job. I liked it. And then when we became K-8, that's when I become, I became instructional support administrator. I became administrator over the TOSA's and it was a good time to do so because again, Common Core. So we hired a science person, we hired a math person, we worked closely with the English language learners, I'm sorry, the ELD department because of the new ELA, ELD standards. They were pushing them together instead of separating it. So all that was happening. So it was a great time. And then when we learned that eighth graders should have algebra in the eighth grade and like, what? You know, and everybody's going to wear the algebra jersey. So we did math, one, two, three. And that was really scary for a lot of people. A lot of teachers, they don't know their numbers. It's not going to work. So that was the job of the TOSA was to help the understanding, help them see how we can do different strategies to get students to reach that, that level. And so I think it was a really good time. And then that's how I started in administration. I know working with, at that time we had Dr. Davis as, he was the director of secondary. And then I worked with Ajala too, because we had to do a lot. Then we had the school funding changed. So you know, schools do plans on what are they going to do for the educational program? And so you write that each year and you have a school side council, parents can be invited, students, and you present that. So then it changed on how schools were funded and the funding was then attached to these goals from the state. So it became very big. So it was a really good time. And I know a lot of teachers, some teachers were retiring because of Common Core. I don't want to do this. This is too much. I was like, but it's just good old fashioned teaching now, you know, it's like no more teaching to the test. And it was so, it was so cute because that year when we were making the pacing guides, there were like four teachers who were going to retire, but they decided to work that summer to do those pacing guides because, oh, I can do the science because I'm, I'm a physics major, but I would teach sixth grade earth science. I mean, and, and she was like on it. She had like all the books there, trying to use the template and help teachers through the beginning of school year. So that was a beautiful time. And so my experience was a good experience. Now, when we made K-8 schools, I understood why you want to keep kids in the district. I understand that. I didn't necessarily agree that, I don't think it was communicated well. I don't think it was communicated well, communicated well to the teachers. I don't think it was communicated well to the public. It's certainly not the school sites and how you're going to separate, you know, how you're still going to remain elementary, you're going to make an eighth grade academy over here on this side of the campus. And so I, I just think that it was, it was a little bit, it was quick. And I, I don't think to this day that it, it, it really has a foothold because now you have charter schools. Oh, you're doing K-8? We're going to do K-8. And so you have competition.
Yeah. And where do you feel like the breakdown in that was, or from the community to the schools, but coming from where?
I think the breakdown, you have to have a district office where there's people who are willing to work alongside others. I may not agree with you, but I will not be disagreeable. Maybe what you say will work. If it doesn't, we come back to table and we change it. I think that when Common Core came along, those eighth grade teachers really needed secondary instruction as far as professional development. They really need, all need to get together and really understand, okay, how am I going to get these kids ready for? What is, what is the thing that they need to really, really hone in? Because it wasn't any more teaching to a test or a blueprint like we, they used to have, like these are the questions on the test. No, it was all about mastery. And so when you have teachers who were always in elementary meetings and never in secondary meetings, it was, it's very difficult to get that mindset to, to help them. So they are left to their own devices. Maybe you're as good as what your school comrades can do or what have you. So it, it, and, and I'm not there now, not saying, and I, I never want to say that the work of teachers is, is lackluster. There are some wonderful people who just do as they do for the betterment of students, researching their own, who go to the professional developments and take a glean from it what they can to make that difference or to really truly understand. But I just think that if we're going to test kids to see how they're doing, we need to explain why we're testing them. We're testing them for this reason or for this purpose, because we're trying to do a new, new way of establishing gate. We're trying to do a new way of finding a cohort of students who can do these intro pathways. And we're starting to do pre AP for eighth graders and we want to, so there has to be something you give teachers, oh, that's why I'm tested. Okay, now I know.
Yeah. And that makes sense. I think the, just being transparent, you know, and being intentional about, like you said, why are we doing this? Or what is the reasoning for this? And then you, I think you'll get a greater return rate or people will be more interested in helping push, you know, the goal. So I do want to switch gears a little bit more in alignment with you actually running. So of course, you know, I'm sure people want to hear the, the why, you know, you're running. What, what was the decision behind that? Yeah. So.
So you know, it was funny, excuse me, when I left Compton Unified and I left because I just didn't feel, I really, I left, truthfully, I didn't feel valued for the work that was being done of myself and those teachers on special assignment. And they were, you know, English specialists, science specialists, math specialists. And you know, it was just disheartening. Even when I left, I found out they put everyone back in the classroom, which I didn't, I think a month later. And I don't think it had anything to do with me. It was just dismantlement. And I didn't, I didn't think that was good for our, for the school district. So I'm, I'm running because I want to, when I left, I said, I have to somehow, I didn't want to leave. I mean, I had great friendships, great camaraderie. There are a lot of people who I saw who were principals and became teachers or, and, and because they were made to do that, forced to do that, but stayed in the district. I mean, can you imagine you were principal, then you're told that you're going to become a teacher, back to a teacher, but you stay? There are people who really love those, these kids, who love this community. And because, you know, if you teach here, you can teach anywhere. I'm proof of that. You can go anywhere. So I'm running to pay it forward to all those families, to all those students who I still talk to, some of them, who taught me what educational equity is, who taught me that no matter where you are is who you are. And you take a little piece of you with you, no matter where you go. You could change your circumstances, but you still innately are you, you know? And that's power in that. And there's value in that. And so I'm running because I want to pay it forward in that way. And also because I just know that there needs to be more transparency and transparency of allocation of how we're using the funds and resources, not just pretty pictures and bells and whistles, you know? A lot of times districts can win awards and certain things. And I'm not, and I'm not, like again, I'm never going to play down the, the work of teachers at all. But sometimes, you know, we have to just understand that, you know, we need parent voice. We need parents to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it too. It's not difficult to understand at all. And I just think that we need to embrace our parents when they have questions. Embrace our business community. So we can start doing some links to our business community in LA, the rounding in the county and not just in Compton. Everywhere to help our kids have better practical experience, you know, and just internships, apprenticeships, all kinds of things. But I want to see that happen. I want to see some mainstays. I want to see Math-A-Thon again. I don't even know if we still have Math-A-Thon. That was the business. I love.
And explain mainstays.
No, mainstays is things that are traditionally here to stay and it's the fifth annual, the fourth annual, the eighth annual, because they work. And it's not always cherry picking at something. Because if we're doing, if you have those things that are tradition and they stay. I, I don't, I try not to say tradition. I try to say mainstays because sometimes when you say tradition, tradition sometimes don't equal change.
Yeah, I like that. I'm like, I'm going to start using.
And this is main and so it shall stay. That's how I look at it. Because sometimes tradition, people hold so close to their heart that they don't see anything beyond. And I, and I think that's like with the board. I do believe in term limits. I just do as term limits for being president. There's term limits. They're thinking about term limits in other areas and places. A lot of school districts are thinking about term limits, only because not that you're not doing your job or you're not, it's just that they're, you reach a point of saturation. You just do.
Yeah. And then definitely as someone of the younger generation and y'all know, you know, being a pastor's kid, preacher's grandkid, we also talk about that in the church space as well. So with the older generation, the younger generation, where you have people, you know, that are sitting in seats for 30 something years and it's in politics as well. So it's something that we're talking about in a lot of different spaces where it's like, well, if you sat in the seat for 30 years and if there were term limits that maybe were able to only keep you in that seat for five years at a time, imagine the growth with six different people there, with six different minds, you know, capable minds that could come in and, and really turn the wheel for that organization. So I'm a big fan of that. And it's interesting like how these conversations are really coming up in a lot of different spaces. But it's true. If you're some, sitting somewhere for 40 years, how are you really being that much more innovative? You know, if you came in, in, you know, 1990 and you still are sitting in the seat. And then it's like, you know, for the younger generation, we're like, well, we've learned, you know, we want to see how we can apply our knowledge to the space and apply the knowledge to the spaces that we're willing, you know, to be a part of, whether it be for a career or, you know, for whatever. You know, so that, that's a, a thing that I, I definitely think is important. And I hope that's something that we can push for. And like you said, not to pull people away or feel like, make you feel like you're inadequate, but just to say, okay, well, let's see how your work can influence the next generation.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. You know, some of the board members have been there the whole educational life of some, some people. And, 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 you know, and I'm an honest individual. I see the demographics that have changed in Compton. You know, my aunt has lived in Compton since my cousin was one of the first three black kids to go to Centennial. You know, so my aunt has lived here forever. And, and it was black, I mean, it was white and black. And now we have majority Hispanic Latino. And the board doesn't represent that. No, I am not Hispanic, I'm Latino. But I hope my seat can go to someone who is because it's important. Now just imagine if this was a, oh, black community and the, and the school board was all white, oh, we have a problem. We have an issue. And so representation, I think should happen, should occur because it's important. And the right representation and doing it for the right reasons.
Yeah, I love that. And we're getting ready to go on a break, but I definitely want to touch on that part. That, and I have a conversation about that when we come back from the break. But this is the New Black History Maker Show and we are talking about Compton and politics, the school board with Adrienne Thomas. So make sure you stay tuned, share it with somebody. Yeah, we will be back. Sorry, I don't know. Sometimes I be trying to get it together, but the mics weren't on. The mics are on now. But okay, welcome back to the New Black History Maker Show. If you are just now tuning in or if it's in the middle of the week and you're playing this back. We are talking Compton politics. We're talking about the school board, talking about the passing of power, all these things. And as you can see, or if you can't see and you're listening, I'm not by myself. I'm joined by Ms. Adrienne Thomas, who is running for Area E. For the school board position, basically there in the city of Compton or for the Compton school district. So we're just having a good conversation and allowing people to get to know her. So before you, we went to commercial, you mentioned, you know, that you would like for your seat because for representation, to go to someone that reflects, you know, the, the population of the, the students, the demographic. Um, to go to someone that reflects, you know, the, the population of the, the students, the demographic. So I know for me, I, and we, you mentioned it to me offline, and the first, when I heard it, I'm like, okay. You know, I was like, let me, you know, sit on this for a little bit, but it makes sense, you know, a- as far as what you're saying in terms of, if it was the other way around, we would have a, you know, issue with it. So, because that was also my, issue with the twenty twenty-one election, where that was something where it's like, you know, I want us to be in places of power. So it was more so of a conversation with the, the mayor's seat. Um, but then also, there can be more conversation about diversity within the city council. Um, and I'm like, that, you know, that's a conversation if the other demographics are willing to have that conversation. And that's a conversation that we have to sit there and have, because we wanna have those conversations as well. So I love that you did not say, okay, I'm gonna, I, you don't wanna run because you're gonna let someone else get in there. So I'm glad that we're at least getting, you know, in hopes that you are actually elected, and then the people, you know, make the right decision. But that we do get the opportunity to experience your knowledge and what you have to offer. And then hopefully, you know, it should, you know, the next person that comes in be more reflective of the demographic, they'll be able to follow after your leadership.
Right, and I think it's important to, like, just mess. Myself going through this is the first time, uh, you know, someone running for an elect- elected position. It's, it's a lot that you need to know and understand. My, my, my wheels are turning in my head. Like in Compton, we don't have a Model United Nations. We don't have, um, any type of debate or speech. When I was there, I did, uh, speech and debate at Centennial, and, um, it was very, it was, I had to turn, we had to turn away kids, cause we could only do so many, and so, and it became a class at one point. And then they started competing. And I remember one time I went to University of Redlands, and we competed, and, um, they saw all these kids who had like, stacks and stacks and crates, and they were pulling them of evidence. You know, everybody knew what, you know, what side they were on, and sometimes you had to flip, you know, maybe you were for or against, and you had to, you know, be aware of that. You had to have your evidence, and our kids had like little folders, and they were like, we got little folders. They get all these crates. I said, well, then you're learning, you know, and we need to get back to that, you know, and we need to put, our students in that position. And I was speaking to two students, and on my website, uh, it's not edited, it's forty minutes, but, um, one kid, uh, Luis Velasco, he talks about that. Like, if it was not for Mesa, I would not know myself. You know, because I, I, I had the, it was individual, it was teamwork. I went home thinking about it, woke up thinking about it. And he said, I ain't come to school for math, English, science. I came to school for Mesa. But he was a good student, you know, um, and so I think it's, it's very important when you hear, students who are in their late twenties or early thirties speaking like that, and they still remember like in detail. If you go on my website and watch that video, he remembers in detail. Like, he kept going back to it, and what is done for him, you know, um, so I think it's important that we, as, as, as bright eyed as he was, that he, at, at being at twenty-eight, it was like, you still thinking like that? You still remember that? And we need, I need more kids to feel that in Compton. Uh, we need our kids to stay in Compton. As I walked, um, I walked the area by Roosevelt, and by the way, Area E is Whaley, Foster, Roosevelt, and Mayo. Those are my schools I represent. Um, there were a couple of students who had to come to the door, cause my Spanish is only so much, I, I, a little bit, you know. And two students, I said, oh, hey, you, you know, thank you for translating. What school do you go to? Cabrillo Lane. Uh, that doesn't sound like a Compton school. No, it's Long Beach. You know, oh, where do you go to school? Oh, New Designs. I mean, that was two students. Just random two students who go to charter schools. Why? And then one student said, oh, there was a, a, a program, I don't remember what she said, I wish I did, but I'm, I'm gonna walk some more, I'll find some more kids, I'm sure. And they didn't have it, they didn't have it, so I was able to get a permit to go to New Design. So it's just, we need to, to focus on that. And I think, you know, there's certain laws coming up now, like, um, I think it's fifteen fifteen or fifteen oh five, I forget. Um, but it's giving more power to the district to deny. Uh, well, how about this, to look more deeper, more deeply at, um, why a charter school's charter should be renewed, or not. If I'm looking at, you're about the same as me, and I don't think that you add up, or, you know, we're not gonna, we're gonna keep our kids here. So it's a little bit, I'm not speaking very loose. There's a lot more to it than that. But I think that is showing me something about how people are thinking about charter schools. And I think the community school is gonna become eventually, let's say in the next, five years, maybe, it's gonna become very important.
Okay, so, uh, so I'm thinking or hearing you, because for my background, and it's interesting too, so you worked at, maybe, we talked about this offline, but at the ABC, um, school district, and I went to Gar, which is in ABC, but then also, lived in Carson, so that's not Compton, but, you know, LAUSD just wasn't where my mom wanted it, so we, she took us to the Cerrito Schools. Um, so everything that you're saying, Mesa, the MUN, all of that is something that I got to experience, and I'm sitting here thinking like, wow, that's crazy that, because I do have friends, I have a god sister, she went to, um, I know she went to Whaley. Um, and, and to Compton schools, except for high school, and I only remember her talking about debate. So everything else that we had, she didn't necessarily have. And I'm thinking about it now, like, it was so regular for us to have it. Um, and it was, I remember when Mesa was introduced. I remember, you know, just being involved in, and doing some of this stuff, you know, that was like a thing for us. So, and then also, I wasn't in MUN, but, MUN was a big thing at Gar. So yeah, I remember the kids, you know, getting ready, I think they went to New York, and, you know, they were able to pre- present, and it was a big, especially for, the kids in, in the eighty classes, like, it was a big deal. So I, I'm, I guess my question would be, how, is that something that you would be able to bring, or?
Uh, that's what my hope is. My hope is to bring something such as that, because it can compass all the way to sixth grade. Um, through twelve. It can, we can start students off young. We can teach them Lincoln Douglas Debate. We can teach them, um, just regular speech and debate, and it, it does not, it can also, um, um, what's the, what's the program that's law? You go and do the court case, uh, mock trial. We can do mock trial. We can do MUN. We can, there's a lot that we can do that, cause the, our kids have talent. They have talent, and they need somewhere besides thumbing on the phone. They need somewhere to exercise those talents, or learn, you know, a, a talent, or, or learn more of themselves. So I think those are programs, when I talk about mainstays, that are mainstays. Um, because, you know, Model United Nations, it becomes a class in your schedule. It doesn't, it's not always after school. Mock trials sometimes is after school, and that's okay, however it works and looks, but we need our students, um, to, to be in a position where they know how to advocate for themselves, if they advocate for a country, or advocate for some case law, what have you, then they're gonna be avocations in their own life, in their own way. And they're gonna speak with evidence and not just always with emotions, that sometimes, you know, it's just displaced. Um, I've, I've, and, and I just, I think that's what we need to do to bring our students, or s- keep our students in our district. And I think it's horrible when we have to deny someone's, you know, they want to leave our district, go somewhere else, but we deny the permit. Because there's nothing that they can show us, or the reason why that they should leave Compton schools to go X, Y, Z. And they keep them, and I, I just think about, what's the hostility walking around in there? Or like, or how they thinking, I'm stuck here. I don't want someone to think that they're stuck here.
At the school, right.
Yeah, you know, I had, I mean, I, when I was walking again, in the, in the Roosevelt neighborhood, um, there were parents who were talking, speaking to me, saying, I don't know, I didn't want my kids to go to Compton schools. It just, they had a, they had a different principal every year. I, the teachers would not, you know, uh, I didn't know who was gonna be the teacher sometimes. Things were switched around a lot, and I'm thinking, wow, how are the people who are getting switched around feel? If you're feeling like that as a parent. And so that leads me to that whole morale. So while I'm running, one, to pay it forward to those people who made me the educator I am, but also the morale. Not only morale of teachers, but the morale of, you know, the maintenance staff, MOT, um, the police department. I, just, just wanting to bring that camaraderie back and work together. You know, we don't have a cadet program, um, ROTC. How do we not have ROTC? Military science is one way that students can be A through G. I know, for example, the school down the way, uh, Norwalk-Lamarada has a wonderful ROTC program. And military science is a way to be A through G, and A through G is about being college and career ready for the state of California. Um, so there's so many things that we can do, so I am one person, but I know there's other people who, are in other areas, running, you know, Denzel Perry, and I think he's A, of course. Um, Mary Jackson Freeney, who just retired from L- LAUSD. Um, we're all on the same page in regards to that, bringing back that feeling. And not only feeling, but observable.
Right, yeah, then that's good too, and, and this for context, um, so that people will be aware of like these, programs that we're essentially talking about are putting students in real life situations as it relates to careers, without you, the parent, having to go seek out, um, other, you know, extracurricular activities or whatever. So I was an athlete, most of my time was taken at by playing basketball, but even as you're saying, like, if something is after school, if I can stay after school for basketball, then why can't, you know, someone stay after school for mock trials? Or for anything, if, you know, of course, if it's, if the parents can, can do it or whatever, but that's just something to think about so that, you're not having, as a parent, or as the community, to overly do for your students. And I think a lot of times, we in the black community are like, oh, well, you know, we don't offer anything for our kids and stuff, and it's like, well, sometimes it's not always on the community, and sometimes there's the school, you know, can provide experiences. And I'm like, literally going back and thinking like, you know, I was in, um, the ATA program at Gar, so that was how I was able to get my, my permit. But the ATA.
All the arts technology.
Yeah, so I was there for three years, so, a- and just so that you can see what it did. It put me in a space where I was able to learn, um, graphic design, I was able to learn, um, Photoshop, Illustrator, basically anything on Adobe. I was able to learn really how to make clothing, um, because they let you go into a focus, right? So I went into fashion design, so I was sewing and making clothes, and then we had a fashion show. I was able to produce the fashion show, um, my senior year, you know, my junior year. I was like a P A, basically. Um, but I got all of this experience, and I'm not in fashion now, but like graphics for my business, and the stuff that you see on the YouTube and stuff. That's all started at the base of me being in, you know, ATA. Yeah, so, but that's something that my parents did not have to spend extra money for. I was already at the school. You know, I was already gonna be there, and it was just, well, how much more can this school offer our children? So I think that's something that's important, and as you're bringing it up, I'm like, oh, yeah, you know, I was somebody that really benefited from it, and, to, to be in an arts academy with artists, you know, people that have went to school, our teachers, you know, majored in art and stuff, for three years, you know, it, it definitely benefited us. And I know some of my classmates went on to do like super dope things in art. I was just there because I couldn't get the permit, cause ATA wasn't something that LAUSD offered. So I was like, I get, I can sew, so I went into it, and then gained so much knowledge, you know, and, my parents didn't have to take me to no, you know, art school. They didn't have to. Yeah, so I want you to be mindful of that, especially for people that can vote in this election. Um, of what, you know, she's proposing, or what, you know, she has experience of seeing, you know, kids doing well in. And then also just being mindful of the fact that you can ask for these things, like, hey, what are you guys doing? To have different programs, you know, at the school for the kids, cause it's, it's real life, um, training. Yeah, it's real life training, so I would love to see that, for the kids in Compton.
Notice that I'm saying everything for a kid who, I wasn't, I, computers or technology wasn't me. Um, a- again, I would always stress to students, read. Right? Speak well, you know, and so those are other spaces for students. Um, for them to figure it out, if that's who they are, and, or they discover who they are when they're doing it. Um, it's just that we just need a lot more. The government, even when we're correcting kids as far as discipline, the government's putting a lot more on us to do for students. Um, what supportive measure did you give? How did you allow the student to fall from grace but then recover? What, what did you do to help to evaluate the situation? I mean, it's more than, yes, restorative circles and restoring the harm, but sometimes it's, it's harm to themselves, not always harm to others. So what are we doing that we, we have that available for students to go and to figure it out? Um, and I've learned one thing. I've worked in Orange County, cause I left, um, Compton, went to ABC, then went to Orange County, Brea. What I've learned is no matter where I go, all kids are the same. I, 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 it, it amazes me, you know, and I've, and some people say, oh, how do you go work in Orange County? Oh, same county. Kids are kids. You know, they have the same thoughts, same crazy outcomes, and, and thinking this and that, and the other, everybody's invincible. Everybody was wronged, you know, what have you, and no matter what, what race, it's fa- divorce, divorce. Single parenthood, single parenthood. You know, there are, it's compounded by different situations, depending on your cultural identity, of course, and your circumstances. But I did not see that one time where I, as educator, was not a value, because I will say Compton Unified prepared me for anything and everything. I, I, I remem- uh, you know, when I first started working in Compton, you know, it was one of those things where, you know, we had sixty kids the first day of school, cause I had to figure out the master schedule, and you didn't have books yet, and it was like, alright, resilient, you figure it out. Keep them in the classroom. And we had to all be resilient and figure it out. Which is, I mean, you know, it can be a bad thing, a good thing, however you wanna look at it, but I look at it as, it, it taught me to be resourceful. And we have to be more resourceful with what we have. We don't have to spend a lot of money if we have willing hearts. And that's the teachers, that's the staff, and we have, we forget that. We, we really forget that. If you, if you just pounce on someone and just do, just tell them to do it, to do it because you said to do it, they're not gonna be really open to doing MUN. Or mock trial. Or even young scholars, or, you know, we should have the strongest BSU's. We should have, uh, Hispanic Organization Promising Hope, I don't know, we should, uh, Metta, whatever we need to have, so they have some identity, some way to talk about, what's going on in society in relation to their cultural identity. Why not? You know, we should have a symposium of that. There's so much we can do that we're not doing, and I don't understand why.
Yeah, and that brings me to kind of bridging this gap of trust. I know, for me, I've seen, with Compton teachers, there's, or a disconnect, right, with the school board and the Compton teachers, and then you have the community, right? So the community kinda puts Compton Unified in this just one big thing, right? So then you have teachers who are like, well, you guys are speaking negatively about the decisions that are made by the school board, but then also coming for, or s- making it seem as if we're ne- doing negative things as well. Um, and they're not necessarily, there's not really a clear, like, direct, like, okay, these are the wrongdoers or whatever. It's just kinda like, all of Compton Unified, is, you know, trash, for lack of a better word, and we need to just uproot, you know, everything and change it. Um, so I, my question would be how to like build that trust? Um, community, the trust between the community and the school board, trust between teachers and the community, and then, you know, like, all three together.
See, I'm, it may not be a popular idea. Like, you can't just take a seat, and let me just say this too. A school board does not, does not implement programs or make policy. I have to say that. Okay, and you are one of seven, and you have to have a seven that's willing to be, to disagree, but not be disagreeable, like I said. In other words, we can't just put a stalemate on the work that we must do. You know, we entrust that the superintendent and the cabinet will do what they need to do in operations of the school, but we can question. We can ask for data. We can ask for reasons why. We can ask for that transparency before we vote, cause once you vote, that's it. Right? So you want, you don't want infighting. So I think the one thing is, you don't, I wouldn't take the seat, um, Compton Unified School District Board and just sit there and go, okay, granted, I got the seat. Okay, trust me. No, you gotta take a show on the road. This not be, this may not be a popular idea, but you have to, if we are in trusty areas, then we, as a board, take some time to say, okay, we got seven areas. We're taking a show on the road. Okay, Thomas, which of your four schools are we gonna hold the meeting? So those parents can come there, and we set it up to the point where we already let them know what our, we, we, we vet what some topics are. And discuss those situations, because what tends to happen is a board meeting has to run, you got a business, you got things to approve. You come into the mic, right, and you have all these things to say, you're just grumpled about something, you want us to be aware. Um, or you want us to, you have an idea. I can sit there and just, cause of Robert's rules, and not say anything back to you. And just call the next person. Thank you. Everybody heard you. But that happens each time. So when do you, you know, cause, you know, people can sit behind Robert's rules and go, I can't talk to you because of Robert's rules. But when you put yourself in position, it may not be, it's not gonna be comfortable. It's not gonna be pretty, maybe. You put yourself out there, and you go to community, and you invite the community in. Then you can hear them, they said, oh, you did this outside of a board meeting? You took time to come in my neighborhood to come and, and facilitate this for me? You took time to come in my neighborhood to come and and facilitate this for me and mine? And invite all of those businesses. Like I'm by um a new store called Compton Health Store.
Plant Health.
Plant Health. Yeah, no, Plant Health is is a different one.
Oh, it's a different.
There's another one, it's right by my house. And so like, imagine if I did something at Foster and I invited them to come. You know, and so you invite community, you invite everyone to come, and you do that, I will say quarterly, maybe do it at the beginning of the year and the end of the year.
Yeah.
For the first two years, maybe a year. Or maybe you let them then start running it themselves. And then they send one person to come to the board meeting to talk about something. I don't know how it would look. This is just ideas, but we build trust like that. Cause you don't wanna just make it look like, oh, you got the seat now, you're just a new face in the seat. No, you gotta let them know that you really, really care about them. And we're not going to always think that everything that you say can be done. We're not making promises, but we're listening. And we might listen, we might hear something different everywhere we go. And we should tape it.
Yeah. No, I definitely agree with that. Yeah, so then. How do you feel?
I'm sorry, Facebook Live it or YouTube Live. Any kind of live, right?
Yeah, so I mean, is that something, I mean, you know, you'd have to see once you get in the seat, but I I feel like. Possible, but it's um, it's something they're willing to do. That that was more.
I I will say it depends again um on willing hearts and open minds. And that's what I say in my work as Equity Officer. All I need is a willing heart and I'll work on the open mind. Cause if you, you know, and and I don't like, you know, and I tell principals, don't force people to do things. You know, just talk, figure out who has a willing heart and we'll work on the open mind. And and that's my thing, like you can't just just be stalemate here, like, come on.
Right.
Cause they, no one on camera needs to see me go back and forth. Us back and forth, this is not personal.
Yeah.
I don't, this is not personal.
Yeah.
I'm not about the Christmas present I'm not gonna get.
Right.
This is about how are we going to establish? That this is easy to understand and that we all have a part in it. Like, you know, we used to call them people, community. Uh, parents, stakeholders, whoever. I like to call them educational partners. Because you build them up so that you could do better work.
Yeah.
Cause if you're the keeper of the knowledge, then they're gonna be frustrated. You're gonna seem like, oh, you little people, just do as I say.
Yeah.
You don't want that. So you have to learn to work alongside people. It's okay.
And the language matters because I know even. You know, in the community, right? That's something that we just group everybody in and you think it's empowering people to call them stakeholders, but a lot of people don't know what stakeholders are.
Right.
You know, they don't know that they are a stakeholder and you have to explain it, right? And people know what a partner is, right? And there's a lot of power in being a partner. With something else, you know, so I love that that language. Um, I do wanna also talk about kind of like. I guess the chemistry within um, you know. Should you get elected within the team? Is that something that you feel like is something that needs or within the the board of trustees? Is that something you feel like you should? Kind of focus on because I think there has been the back and forth, so. I I think the community has has seen, and not just with the school board, but with, you know, our council members as well, where. It, you know, people are not getting along. So is that a necessity? Is it important?
So let me say this, I have no dog in this fight. Right?
Yeah.
I'm here because I'm here for the good fight.
Yeah.
Right? I'm here to get in some good trouble. I'm not here to make trouble. And so. I have nothing to lose, but the students have everything to gain.
Right, very true.
Right? So I don't know how it becomes personal. I'm a very jovial person. It it becomes personal, like why? You know, like, okay, let's focus on what we're here for, right? And I'm not here to school anybody.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you, anybody on the school board who's been there seventeen, twenty, you can trump me. I've been here seventeen, twenty, yep, and I'mma listen. Because I respect your experience, but. There's something called the California School Board Association. You go there, they have a conference. You can go and you learn how to gel together as a board. I'm not too high and mighty. I've been before. Um, just cause I'm a blurred, that's black nerf. Right, um, and I've and I've I've gone just to, oh, this is what it's like. Oh, okay, alright. And I've gone twice and I'm not on the school board. Um, and so if you're willing to learn alongside me, then sure. You know, but I'm gonna call it like I see it. And like I said before in another interview, um, if you vote no, you vote yes, you voted. Right? But you can abstain.
Yeah.
But if, but because you, it's about your record on what you believe is is right. And what should be a team effort. And you should just vote on something just because you gotta make a vote.
Right.
Um, and that just doesn't make sense to me. And abstaining means maybe we need to go back and think about it. Maybe we need to have a study session.
Right.
Maybe we need to discuss this in closed session. Whatever it needs to happen, but it's not about you and me. We're here as a team, we're supposed to be a team. Now, I don't know how many people who are running now of us who will get on the school board. And maybe the camaraderie will be better, you know, with like minded. But I would hope that you could teach old dog new tricks.
Yeah, I love that. So we're gonna on a break and uh we'll be right back, but definitely stay tuned with us. Alright, we are back again with the New Black History Maker Show. Um, I am with Miss Adrienne Thomas. We are talking about Compton and education opportunities for the children, um, just a lot of stuff. It's been a really good conversation. So if you are hopping on at this point, definitely go back. Um, like I said earlier, if you are not a Compton resident. Um, it's still important for for us to hear these conversations. There's a big push on voting. Uh, and uh, we, I feel like don't talk enough about voting locally. We don't talk enough about voting for the school board, so. That's something that I'm I'm really excited that these um conversations and as the election gets closer. June seventh or is June?
June seventh, the mail-in ballot should should come um either May eighth, ninth. And then um I think you have it till the May twenty-third, but you can check it. Yeah.
Okay.
You can check L A vote dot net to make sure, but I think it's gonna come all at once, meaning the sample ballot and your mail-in ballot.
Okay.
And then you can read our candidate statements in that and everything. Um, and you know, you you before break, you asked a question about try, you know, not trying, but. Getting along with or working with, you know, some incumbents today or people who are there are gonna be there, cause their election is not. Um, the election time hasn't occurred yet. Um, my thing is I'm there to be not contentious but conscious. You know, I can learn, I can learn something from everyone. I'm I'm not. I I'm smart, I think we're all smart, but it's about how we use that smart to become intelligent. In in whatever is that we are now, you know, tasked with um reviewing or passing or approving rather. So I just think that um it can work if, like I said, willing hearts and open minds.
Yes, I'm I'm definitely. Definitely looking forward to that, uh, but I think it's just something, you know, we can't be naive about what. Well, I'll say as a community about what the people have shown us, so it makes me wanna definitely encourage the community to. If we see someone that is capable, you know, like yourself, that we, you know, are listening to and it's like, okay, well, that that sounds good. That sounds like our kids need that. We need to make sure that we're supporting not only in the um with the ballots, but then also just in a real way with numbers and with presence and with. Showing up to meetings and and making our voices known and letting people know like, hey, you know, we see what's going on basically, so. I think that's um, you know, it's very necessary. Yeah, I think that's a definite definite necessary thing, so.
I think for school board is difficult, cause people go, oh, if you took the time to run for school board, you must be a good person. That's probably true, you're a good person. That doesn't mean you're right for the school board though.
Yeah.
And so I don't wanna take anything away from anyone, but you could be good and righteous and pay it forward in other ways. And it it just, again, everybody has to understand that things evolve. And change is not comfortable, but it's necessary.
Yeah.
And we have to to come to grips with that.
Right.
And I just, I believe now is the time for change. Um, and 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 the good one, not because uh of any. Any sneakiness or any um ill will or there's a hidden agenda. None of that. Just, it's just, you know, a time for a change so we can do better for our kids. Keep Compton kids in Compton schools.
Yeah.
Number one, that just threw me for a loop when those kids are, I don't go to this school this year. And those parents is like, oh, no. Your face crunches up, oh, no, oh, no, you live right here on Stoneacre. And you're talking about some, oh, no, and you know, you look back, you have three kids and they don't go to our schools. This is, this is interesting to me.
Yeah.
Like.
So let's kind of switch gears. I mean, we've been talking about the school board, but then also, um, if you can, let's kind of talk about the inner workings of. The school board and then what you guys actually can do. Um, like, you know, and what, I guess the community can say like, okay, these are. How, so that we can put actual tangible expectations there. So they're not just like, oh, well, y'all should do this. And it's like, but we don't even have, you know, a say over that.
Okay, so let's do it this way. Okay, so when when the school district introduces a bond measure, right? That means they need money for something.
Right.
And I talked about that earlier, whether it's, it's four reasons, but I don't remember all four, but two I do know for a fact. One is because they wanna increase teacher salary and then two, they wanna do some type of school improvement, right? So that goes out, once we develop and say we 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 need a bond measure, right? Um, we get community people, we get an oversight committee, committee once it's passed, but who voted for it? The people who are residents.
Yes.
So that's their power, right? So they help us make policy. Because when you vote for a bond measure and you see what the details of that measure is going to pay for or do. You're helping us with policy, so you have a hand in it too. I, as a school board member, make sure that that oversight committee, like we have a measure S right now in our district of in Compton. Uh, make sure that it's being used and allocated properly, the oversight committee who was chosen. You know, they applied, however it worked, I'm not quite sure. Um, and then you as a taxpayer. Who voted for, if you didn't vote for the majority, you get a report. On how's that money being used in this phase and that phase, so on and so forth. And you need to understand that and you need to know that's your power. I, as a school board member, want to make sure that the superintendent and the cabinet are doing their best job at managing and operating the school district. Um, so suggestions of that programs, I would like to see, dah 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 dah. Um, asking questions when things are put forth. Instead of just approving it, make sure we understand. Maybe some of the questions I'm asking is to help the public and not so much my knowledge.
Yeah.
Um, if you have a hundred and seventy-nine page interim document that talks about the solvency of the school district. There should be someone who's doing a PowerPoint and hitting the highlights.
Yeah.
Cause the public needs to know.
Yeah.
We all have access to go to board docs and see the hundred ninety-seven pages. What the heck does this mean? Right? So and the board's like, yep, ninety-seven, okay, yeah, and whoa, wait, what was that? So just something for the public. So I, as a school board, because whoa, whoa, whoa. Let's make, let's do some highlights so the public will understand. You know, um, if we have a safety issue or we need to talk about certain things happening in their schools, we can bring forth that, I like to see that happen. Or can we get that, you know, can we look into that? Can we, so we can impart that knowledge.
Right.
Um, as far as negotiations, we hope that we work with the superintendent to pick a good negotiation team for like salaries. And that that team is is good and and um is gonna work with the teachers' union or the. Uh, C S E A or A F T or whatever other unions we have. So, but we're not part of negotiations. We just, we approve, but we hope the team that has been developed is a good team that's gonna do the right thing.
Pick by you all or?
The team is a, is a, it's it's a superintendent, they pick certain people. And we um make sure the team is is stacked pretty good as far as who's gonna go into that room and negotiate.
Okay.
Um, it could be people from the district office, it could be like someone from who's in charge of C T E, whatever, however it works. Um, it could be a principal, principal could be on there as well, but they're part of negotiations, so that way we we trust. That they will do right by us. And if we have questions, then we question that. Um, but the superintendent is hired by the school board, works for the school board. Um, everybody, as I've always been taught, we all work at the pleasure of the board. Um, and so that's why you see a negotiation of salary for a superintendent. Um, that also happens for assistant superintendents or deputy superintendents. Um, but we represent what's going on in our schools, especially in trustee areas. It's much easier now to talk about foster and 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 Waley and Mayo and. And what they need or highlight them or highlight those teachers. So I love trustee areas because you get to do more of that. And it's not just a cherry picking, you know, um, you actually get to advocate for your schools in your area.
Right.
And I think that's a beautiful thing. Um, there's a lot more to the school district and it would take a whole segment.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make it really simple.
Cause most people are not even aware of so anything.
But it's a partnership, because remember I said educational partners? You have that power when it comes to vote to help us improve those schools. You are helping, you are forming policy as a person who pays taxes in our, in our um, in our um city. And then I, as a school board member, ensure that 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 money is allocated correctly. And I question when it's not, or, you know, we then need to hold more town hall meetings, maybe on certain aspects of certain things. You know, um, and not always have it behind closed doors. There's a lot of things, H R things and certain things that we have to keep behind closed doors because we have lawyers and everything. That cannot be public. That's what a study session, I mean, that's what a closed session is for. But a study session, we can also do that too. Where we need to, okay, I do not understand, what do you mean about A series, B series, D series, which means that somebody bought our bonds? Able to use that money to then.
Okay.
Move forward. If I need a study session on that, just cause as a whole, I don't think we understand it, then you can get one.
Yeah, that's good. And, you know, like we said, this information is, it's something that most people are not, you know. Just privy to or they're not, you know, seeking for. So um, my next question would be as far as, cause you, you know, we mentioned areas. And you've mentioned areas in the different schools and stuff. So as far as like with area E and those specific schools, are there any things that you're? Looking forward to or that you have a thought to do, or can you do certain things for like those schools? So if it is like events or, you know, just bringing certain.
I think you have to respect the fact that you do have a superintendent. You can't just show up to a school. You should give the respect to that principal to let them know. Um, ahead of time that I wanna come to your school this month and this, we use to schedule that understanding. Um, because principals deal with a lot. You wanna be respectful of that, but you do wanna go visit your school. I wanna go visit to see what are they doing, what do they need? You know, um, what's working, what's not working, just to see. Um, and everything, so I could bring that back and 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 talk to the principal about it. Um, it could be aesthetics. It could be, it could be climate as far as what I feel when I go onto the campus. And that, you talk more to the principal a little bit, but. The superintendent is in, you know, in charge of that area. But you wanna be able to highlight things, you wanna be able to bring. An understanding what needs to change. Um, listen to parents as well. That's why I said that that town hall meeting. I mean, I'm sorry, when we take that on the road, when we go to different, you know, um, trustee areas and have those town hall meetings, those make sense. As you will find out, definitely more information and what you need. What is my school district doing, not doing? What do we like? What do we need? We can't just sit up there and just, you know, you gotta go see.
Yeah.
You know, and I also wanted to say this about school board. Another thing school board does too is the resolutions. So a lot of times, you know, you can, you you can make resolutions on certain things that you want to to. To have understood about whatever it is in society. Um, if it's about LGBTQ two I A. If it's about LGBTQ2IA, because we do have unique families.
Yeah.
Everybody, you know, we just have to embrace that.
Yeah.
If it's something about cultural celebration, cultural identity, if it's something about how we vet, you know, certain books or curriculums or however, if we, you know, however it works. You know, a lot of times you have board advisory committees that will bring forth resolutions as well. And those board advisories maybe, they may focus on fiscal or that board advisory that looks at our board policy and, and things like that. And when those board policies need to be changed because of whatever laws and everything, they bring forth resolutions as well. So there's so many little different things overall. And me never having been on the school board, this is just me speaking from having worked for school boards. And again, I'm speaking very, very understandable level. And I know some of them, that's not true, it goes deeper than that. Yes, it does, but I'm just being real quick about it.
No, yeah, of course. So then that also was something I wanted to bring up, your experience or have you had a lot of interactions with the school board of where you're working now or, because what does that make up? Is it the name, like, because it's Cerritos, Bellflower?
It stands for Artesia, Bloomfield and Carmenita.
Okay, so but then the school board is?
It's, it's, the school board is Hawaiian Gardens, City Artesia, City of Cerritos, and I'm forgetting one. That's it.
Okay.
And then, but what I do now is equity officer. I make, so my position was created by the board. They wanted this position because of some things that were going on initially with former students who were African-American and their experience at ABC. So, but this was, this was already in the works and it sort of kind of pushed the envelope when that happened.
Okay.
Pushed the envelope when it happened, but it was already going to occur. And so my whole thing is I deal with Title IX, which is the sexual harassment. I deal with student, student sexual harassment, the HR director deals with, the associate superintendent deals with the adult, the adult. But there's laws that have changed since 2020 for Title IX, gender equity, of course, and then also the sexual assault. And it can be slight. You have to report it and it has to be investigated and it has to either be formal, informal, depending on what the complaint. And then Title VI, which is, Title VI is nothing more than what we all know is the Civil Rights Act, which means there shall not be no discrimination based on color, I mean, race, gender, I'm sorry, race, ethnicity, nationality, religion, and some, some, some aspect of disability. So I make sure I, I, I deal with that and, and making sure that our culture and climates are conducive to our different cultures that we have in, in the ABC, which is a lot.
Very diverse.
Right, making sure that it's not just equality, making sure it's equity.
Yeah.
You know, when we go through, see certain programs or when we, we have certain situations where certain kids are always chosen, certain things like that, you know, dealing with parents and their thought processes and how they think their kids are being treated, it's all kinds of things. So I, I help make policy or positions in that way. Sometimes positions are easier, because sometimes the board not ready to focus on a policy or the superintendent may not be ready. We can do a position.
Yeah.
And so I think right now in our society, I think the biggest positions we're focusing on is curriculum that deals with gender identity. That's another one. And then just having affinity groups for different cultural groups.
Okay.
I think that's another one. Some people sometimes ask, well, 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 where do the white kids go? Because if you make so many things, I said, they go to any group they want to go to. They learn, they can go to this group and learn tomorrow, go to this group and learn on Tuesday.
Right.
You know, so I deal with a lot of those conversations.
Yeah, that's so important. So that's a, a whole different conversation. Because, you know, it's, it's necessary. And then especially as someone that, that went to GAR and I, we had a, one of the ladies that I went to GAR with, she went to, she's gonna kill me if I keep this wrong, but I think she went to Howard.
Howardite?
Yeah, so, and then she pledged, she's a Delta as well. And we were sitting here and just talking about the, the influence that the HBCUs have had on, on her. And we had some other women and she was like, you know, leaving GAR, she had no sense of being a black woman, you know, outside of maybe her mother. And she was just like, you know, we just went there and they didn't really, there was no experience for me to experience my blackness as a teenager. And she was like, you know, going to the HBCU and now, you know, we, how many years ago did we graduate? Almost, almost ten years. She was just like, yeah, I wouldn't have got that. And if she would have went somewhere else, you know, she doesn't think she would be as like proud or just have like this self-love, you know, that she has. So I appreciate that, hearing it from like the admin side, because it is something that as we leave these schools, we're like, oh, they didn't teach us nothing about, you know?
And the same thing is with Compton. There's not that many black students in Compton.
Yeah.
I think ABC is four percent.
Wow.
It's, I know the exact number, it's one thousand four hundred and nine. And that's K through 12.
Wow.
That's it.
Wow.
And so, yeah, and I think in Compton, I'm not sure the number, but it's small. And so you do have to, I think they have a black student initiative now. I have one in ABC, I just hired a counselor. But, okay, you have to, I hired a counselor, but I had to change the title. And that's, that's fair. And so they're dealing with black and underrepresented student counselor. So secondary counselor. So it makes sense because there are other, other underrepresented groups that also are going to need support and advocacy. So it makes sense.
Well, yeah, I definitely appreciate that, that word. Like I said, it's, it's beyond, you know, necessary. And I think the young generation is really gonna benefit from it, especially now we're seeing this, especially with like HBCUs and stuff. I know a lot of, with signing day, it just happened. And I used to work in education too. So my kids that I had were seventh and eighth grade in like 2017, 2018. So they're now freshmen and seniors, seniors in high school, freshmen in college. And not all of them are going to school, but there was a good amount of them that picked HBCUs. You know, so it, it's good because when we were growing, coming up, especially being athletes, when we were coming up, when I was in school, being an athlete, it was such a negative connotation that we had for it. It was like, no, you're not gonna be able to do this successfully. It's not like the, you know, the D1 schools. And then, you know, you just had people that didn't really know about anything, especially being from the West Coast. They're just like, oh no, the education is not the same.
But then too, we have to talk to our parents. Because I remember going to a black college, the Black College Fair in 2017. I have four girls on the spot, they were 4.0 plus students. And they all got into different HBCUs to the point where they're on the phone calling saying, no, we want you. And they actually wrote letters later and I took a picture at the school with them. And their parents, one by one, told me they're not going, she's not going that far.
And this was recent?
This is 2017, that's recent enough for me.
Yeah.
I'm like, we have to let our children fly.
Yeah.
They can always come back home. They, they're guaranteed they can come back to California.
Yeah.
You know? But we have to be okay with being uncomfortable about our child leaving, you know? And I think that's very, very important. So, and then people say, I can't afford that, I don't remember my parents paying for it. They paid for my sister, they paid for nothing for me.
So, yeah, it's a, you know, and it's a, a, a complete thing. And I know we're talking about schools and children, but at the end of the day, you know, like I'm saying, you know, she's mentioning some programs that the ABC school district that they have, and I'm telling you that I benefited from them, right? And then now I'm someone in the community that's able to provide change or use what I experienced at that school. So just be mindful of how this works. You know, the, the decisions that we're making for the children now are gonna affect us in our community in 10 years, right? Whatever you're able to provide to Compton students now is gonna be how the city is able to move. That's gonna be how strong the city is able to move down the line. So I think we've been able to see when we're not putting a lot of effort or when there isn't a lot of like just attention to detail with the students and seeing that there's not students staying in the, in the schools or parents are saying, no, I, maybe I didn't get the best education from Compton or it was like this, so I'm gonna take my kid somewhere else. So I really want us to make sure that we understand that we are partners in this. You know, regardless of anyone has said it to you or if this is the first time that you've heard it, that you are a partner in, you know, the future of, of your city and, and how things move. So I'm, you know, excited to see, you know, what's happening.
Yeah.
Go ahead, did you want to say something?
No, I just think it's very important for everyone to be aware that we put, we need to put more into students. And it's not just about the basics. I mean, your report card and your core classes are your basics. You should achieve in math, science, English, history. But what are you doing that adds to who you are? Well, how are you learning who you are?
Yeah.
And I think that is the most important thing, because the CAS doesn't tell me that about you. Okay, it tells me you're proficient, you should be proficient.
Yeah.
And if you're not, we're gonna work on to make sure you are. But I, we need for our students to have a space and a place so that they can figure it out.
Yeah.
And not always just be in the rat wheel of tutoring, 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 tutoring. It's okay if you're still, maybe your tutoring will benefit you and you will realize that you need to really focus and pay attention so you can stop the tutoring and focus on, oh, I like this over here, let me go do this over here, you know? And it's okay.
Yeah, so just figuring out other ways and how, you know, the individual, the, the, or the students, the demographics, you know, can, can be served. I'm definitely, you know, I'm excited just to see what's happening. I think we had some, well, a little bit of good change as it relates to the last election in 2021. So I'm really interested in seeing how, you know, the school board can also just make a change and then also be a catalyst for like more change, you know, with the city.
And let me say this too, you know, it's always this thought process, you do all this work to run and everything. So what happens if you don't get it? Are you still gonna walk that walk and talk that talk? Sure, I'll figure it out.
Right.
Foster's like right down the street from me. I can walk to it, I can step on my backyard and go, it's Foster.
Right.
So I have to figure out some way my, you know, like, okay, how, what can I do? You know, and it's okay to be okay with, I can't never say that I didn't try. You know, so I'm okay with that.
Right, yeah. And then also just shout out, you know, the show's New Black History Makers. So just hearing you and what you're doing there, I'm, I'm definitely, just it, it won my heart because I'm a product of ABC. So, you know, to hear that there's someone that is advocating on behalf of, and then I have two brothers. One is at Ross and then one is at GAR. So, you know, just to see that there's somebody there, you know, at least that's like, hey, the experience of these black boys matters, you know, to me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we love it. So that's, that's new black history making stuff for sure. But there's also a slate that you're running with. So you have a little bit of time, but basically a slate is they're running in different areas, but then you guys are supporting each other.
I mentioned earlier, so it's Denzel Perry in Area A, Mary Jackson-Freeney who's Area G, and then I'm Area E.
Okay.
And so that is the slate. And then Dr. Ariana, Ayanna Davis, Ariana Davis, she doesn't have anybody, she's not even on the ballot. She took Mae Thomas's spot.
Okay.
And there was nobody running against her, so of course she's on the ballot, but she is going to be on the board.
Okay, so, yeah.
So it's the four of us.
Okay. So, yeah, hopefully we can get some of them to come on. I would love to have all of you guys come on.
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah, so we can just see the power of it and, and see the numbers. But I'm excited to see like what, you know, we're able to do and hopefully get some pushing and, and, and just getting people out to vote and hear you guys. I know we've talked about it, but on the 14, there's the
I was gonna mention that.
Conversation that you guys are having, so.
Yeah, the Compton advocates.
Yeah, so it's on the 14, shout out to Compton advocates. I've been mentioning it for the past few episodes, but they are meeting Saturday, May 14, 10 a.m. at Youth Build. So make sure you guys are getting out to that. Like I keep saying, if you are not a Compton resident, but you don't have anything to do on a Saturday, I think you should get there. I really think that you should be there to hear what's going on, especially if you're a parent or if you are, we're gonna start using that word, partners.
Educational partners.
Yes, we're definitely gonna start using that. Yes, you can just ask questions and see and then take them back to your like perspective places, but definitely be there. Any like last words or anything?
Um, no, I think my last word was added, you know, we'll see how this race goes. But I'm looking forward to, you know, if, if I do not become the trustee for Area E, how can I still give back?
Yeah.
So that'll be the next thing that I will focus on because you just don't stop just because you didn't get one opportunity.
Yeah.
You know, you, you keep going as if, you know, all my other stuff in my life is an opportunity.
I'm like, you're doing a lot, so.
But, but I think, but I think you just, that part that just, you do because it's just in you. You do because you know it's right.
Yeah.
And so.
I love that, so thank you. And hopefully, I, I, I want to stay connected. I want, you know, to see what New Black History Makers can do or provide for the different things that you're doing.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Definitely enjoy this conversation. We have to have you back with the slate and then after you win.
There you go, yes, there you go, yes, yes.
We want to keep up with what you're doing. It's the same thing with, with Judge Remens, we interviewed him when he was a candidate. So the relationship has remained the same. So we wish, you know, the same for you. But thank you so much. Please send this conversation to anybody, send it to anybody. But we want you guys to be aware and educated on the things that are happening, not only in the city, but in the black community. This is something that's history-making for us. Regardless if you're a citizen, if you live in LA, California, doesn't matter, this is history-making for us. So thank you all, we will be back next Friday. But, yeah, have a great week. I do not, it's always something. I don't have the video key, definitely. Without the power of God behind everything I do, I really am completely inadequate.
I'm helping the culture, these guys are, these guys are part of us as well. You know, these are guys of our cousin, I'm helping the culture, I'm, I'm, I'm pushing the culture forward in another way.
Hey, black child, be what you can be, learn what you must learn, do what you can do, and tomorrow.